Alrighty, welcome everyone to our 18th 2020 regular board meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Jennifer, if you'd like to get us started, go right ahead, please.
Should I wait till seven or get right?
I would wait a little bit as attendees start trickling in.
Okay.
Let's wait till we have a some, we've got eight, six now, so they're starting. They can't join until I hit broadcast.
Great. If I could get everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Welcome everyone tonight. We'll go ahead and get this meeting called order. First up, we'll start with our 2.01. This is Routine Matters, and it is our public comment session, and we do have a few a few comments. Leslie, if you'd go ahead and read to you, and then we'll let the final one speak.
Okay, first I have Connor Gunn. He says, hello, thank you for taking the time to hear me. My name is Connor Gunn. I am the son of suspended head coach, head basketball coach Bill Gunn. For 13 years, my dad has successfully run a winning program, turning young boys into men and shaping them for the rest of their lives. Every summer workout, every practice, every trip, every game, I watched my dad push his players to become better players on and off the court. His players were held to certain high standards because he knew that was the only way that they could succeed in life. Over the past 13 years, my dad has not once lost the respect of Kirkwood High School or the city of Kirkwood and those surrounding, positively impacting kids throughout every grad grade from first to 12th. My dad was implicated in a text message there illegally taken from our home in mid-January of 2019. On April 16th, 2019, the thread was posted throughout social media as an attack. Two coaches on the basketball staff said words that were reasonable reasons for termination. Another coach was fired through these words, though these words were not bad. And my dad, who said big talker on social media, after class of student called my dad and his staff mother effers on his Instagram story that I myself saw. Those words were enough to go through a month of suffering and embarrassment for not only my dad, but my mom and myself as well. Almost a month of, almost all of the month of May 2019 was spent believing that my father was going to lose his job over five words I could use in church. Upper administration very poorly investigated and handled the situation, unconditionally feeding to the cries and pleas from the Lloyd family and, I'm sorry, from another family and ignoring the factual evidence that Bill Gunn had no reason to be suspended. The poor unfair and spiteful decision also led to an announcement of another coach on the another team news congratulating him. As a student where I attended, this announcement caused me to face the rest of my school day with humiliation and what felt like every person I knew asking me what happened, and I had no clue. For the first time in my life, I considered attending another school outside of Kirkwood. This disloyalty and stabbing the back that I felt from Kirkwood rippled through my entire freshman year where I dealt with harsh comments and bullying from other students directly related to their decision. You say you are about students, but you don't care, or you would have looked at the whole picture and considered your actions. All I ever wanted to do was play for my dad. It's our life and I got robbed. The players in the program also suffered for the past year with no leader, no real direction. And after a mediocre basketball season, the program is left with no money, no direction, and still no head coach. Following the decision this April to postpone the approval of my dad, the period of uncertainty for all the players in the program continues. My dad did everything you asked, but you keep changing the rules. As a result, you are leaving my dad, or whoever may step into the job next year in a very tough position as camps, tournaments, jerseys, and more still may must be planned. Concluding my time tonight, this decision made a year ago has affected every relationship I had and will have with any person I encounter in my life, staining a wound I cannot heal as I feel the trust my family have for Kirkwood was destroyed and my trust everyone in my life along with it. Thank you. That was the first one.
Thank you. Can we, I just make a quick statement, Les, please. I know these were statements that were sent in, but we'd love, we'd like to not have used staff members, you know, names. I understand this is a kind of a different situation, but you know, that's that's sort of a rule we usually have at our meetings. So I just want to make sure everyone is aware of that.
Got it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The second one is from Zoe Knight. My name is Zoe Knight and I am a junior at Kirkwood High School. I would like to submit a public comment. I am not 100% sure how this works, but I'm going to give you my comment. She says, in regards to 2021 school year, I want to know how the Kirkwood School District is planning for next year. I know the state is opening back up, but that doesn't change the fact that the virus is out there and a lot of people are dying as a result of the virus. I think the Kirkwood School District needs to set an example for other school districts. The Kirkwood School District needs to create a plan to protect students. I would like to know as soon as possible what the plan is for the fall because students and families need to plan accordingly. Are Kirkwood schools opening back up? If they are, how will, how will things change? Will Kirkwood go online? What happens to the students who can't attend school? If they are, how will things change? All of these questions need to be addressed some rather than, rather sooner than later. By not answering these questions, you are opening them to speculations and you are not giving the student and families proper time to digest the information. You need to address the problem and be a role model in these uncertain times. I know that it can be hard to plan for the future right now, but it's better to be overprepared with multiple solutions than to have no solutions until the last minute. The Kirkwood School District has taught me to be a leader and now it's time for the Kirkwood School District to leave. So I ask, what plans do you have for 2021 school year? Thank you, Zoe. And that's all I have.
So I don't see Paul Ward on the attendee list, so I guess you'll have to, do you have his statement? If not, we'll have to skip it.
He did not write a statement. He only mentions recent sunshine law request.
Okay, then we'll have to move on. I don't see him on the panel. Sorry if I'm wrong, but I just don't see him on that or as an attendee, so.
Was the last speaker, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. Leslie said he had emailed and said he wanted to speak and yet, but he's not on the attendees, so.
Well, we will move right along in our agenda. Thank you very much, Leslie. And thanks, Ginger, for the info. So moving on to 2.02, approval of the agenda for our regular meeting. We do have one change that we need to make to the agenda tonight.
Mr. Frost?
Go ahead.
Should I go ahead? Okay.
Yes.
All right, so as discussed with administration and recommended by legal counsel, I believe that an informational report has been inadvertently left off the agenda. This is a non-actionable item, and for this reason, I make a motion to amend the agenda to add item 7.04, class size update for the 2021 school year. That will be an action item.
Thank you. We need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second to amend our agenda tonight. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. That is approval of our agenda for tonight's regular meeting. Moving, thank you all very much. Right along in our agenda is 2.03 of rewards and honors. Mr. Case?
Hey, so students from both middle schools competed in a virtual battle of the books. The teams were set to compete at the area-wide competition, but of course, the event was canceled. Our middle school librarians in schools stepped up and coordinated a virtual event for our students in an online competition. Questions asked were derived from 20 books the students read. During the competition, in between rounds, students retreated to videos, both live and pre-recorded, from authors of several of the books. Neither one of the competition, I'm sure they have bragging rights, but we know our school librarians and the supporting authors were winners for coordinating this great event for our students. Thank you to Brandi Fink, Kristin White, Lindsay Burress, Lisa Gender, and Pamela Sigsby for making this event a success for students. Also, recently announced project Lead the Way, the distinguished schools, school districts, and schools earning recognition are Kaiser Elementary School, Kirkwood High School, North Glendale Elementary, Robinson Elementary, Tillman Elementary, and Westchester Elementary. Project Lead the Way recognition program is designed to honor district and schools committed to increasing student access, engagement, and achievement in their Project Lead the Way programs. The schools and districts recognize our empowering students to thrive in an evolving world and have achieved exemplary results from their Project Lead the Way program. So as you can see from the report, we have Project Lead the Way launch in K through five, Project Lead the Way Gateway six to eight, and the high school program in nine through 12. Also, there was a surprise for Dr. Havener. He was selected as the 2020 Administrator of the Year by Missouri Journalism Education Association. He was nominated by Mitch Eden, AHS Journalism Advisor. Kirkwood High School student journalist and Mitch Eden shared the news with Dr. Havener on a surprise Zoom call, and there's a picture of the call there, so. Also, one of our own, Angie Bernardi, a member of the Kirkwood School Board, has achieved both master and distinguished board member certification from Missouri School Boards Association. These are remarkable accomplishments to have achieved within the same year. The Board Member Certification Program, established by Missouri School Boards Association, MSBA, recognizes school board members who choose to complete additional professional development requirements beyond eighteen and a half hours required by the Outstanding Schools Act of 1993. At MSBA, at SBA, they believe ongoing professional development for school board members is crucial for school board members to maximize their contribution to the school board and the superintendent governance team. A certificate and lapel pin will be mailed to Mrs. Bernardi in recognition of this achievement. Congratulations. That concludes our awards and honors report.
Thank you. To Angie. Angie, that's a huge accomplishment for Mrs. Bernardi for all your time and effort. I know how much time and effort you put into everything, but the fact that you're able to make a huge accomplishment for MSBA is pretty amazing. So thank you so much for all your time.
Thanks, Darnell. It's an honor to be recognized. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I think Darnell might be experiencing some Wi-Fi problems.
Alrighty.
Here he is.
Thank you, guys. I'm having some issues on my end. I'm so cut out from time to time. Moving right along.
Darnell, I think you might have to have Jennifer Pingborn or Dr. Condon go through the agenda.
I'm ready. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, this brings us to item three on the agenda, and this is the consent agenda. We're seeking approval for item 1.3.
I'm sorry.
Are you here? We just started, Darnell.
Jennifer should probably do it if Darnell can't. I think that's probably more appropriate. Darnell, are you back? There he is. Dardell, can we hear you?
You guys, you guys are there?
Yes. Jennifer, do you want to take over just until he can kind of get that settled?
Darnell, we can't hear you, just FYI.
Okay.
We can.
Now we did.
Yeah, we hear that.
I'm, I may have to, I'm getting like a low bandwidth signal, so I may have to regroup here on my end. I'll try to get to a better place at my house or something.
Tell your kids to get off the Wi-Fi.
Meanwhile, can Jennifer run the meeting?
Yes, I will read through. We need approval for the consent. Item 3.01, approval of April 13th, 2020, regular meeting. Item 3.02, approval of minutes for April 2020, closed meeting. Item 3.03, vouchers payable for May 18th, 2020. Item 3.04, approval of personnel items for May 18th, 2020. And item 3.05, approval for awarding the contract for sewer maintenance project, May 18th, 2020. This is an action item.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any abstentions to note? Not seeing any. Can I get everybody in favor of approving consent agenda 3.01 through 3.05? In favor, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any notes? Motion passes. And let's see, next up is unfinished business. Sorry, I have to click on and off here because I can't see it. Unfinished business. Darnell, are you back or do you want me to keep moving? Okay, unfinished business. We have item 4.01, adoption of MSBA policy revisions. This is the second reading. Michelle?
Yes, so several, actually more than several, many policies were brought to us with revisions from MSBA due to changes in law. And those were reviewed with the board at a previous board work session. A few have been removed for further discussion and consultation with MSBA. And so what we've provided here tonight are the policies that are ready for a second reading and for board approval. I don't know if I want to list them all because there are quite a few. But I'm happy to if anyone needs me to.
Michelle, this is Chad. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I assume you heard nothing back on GCD?
Correct.
I'd like to make a motion to remove GCD until we get clarification on that last line on page four.
Alright.
Thank you. For the board's clarification, MSBA marked out the words, if the school district, school board of education does not approve a candidate, that the superintendent will present an alternative candidate, and that was crossed out. And I'm just, it seems bizarre to me that that would be crossed out and and there wouldn't be a process to present a alternative or second candidate.
So we will probably want to read the policies that we are asking for the board to approve, leaving out GCD until we have additional guidance from MSBA.
Don't we get a second on his motion before we move on?
I think somebody did. I heard Angie, maybe. Okay. Go ahead. We need, we need a vote.
Okay, can we take a vote for pulling out GCD? Anybody, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Michelle, do you want to read the ones then that we would be voting on?
Sure, so this is a motion for the board to approve policy, the MSBA changes to policies BBE, BHADEA, DJF, DJFA, GBBC, GBLB, GCI, GCPB, GCPE, GCPF, GDC, GDI, GDPB, GDPE, IICC, IKF, JEC, JSCL, JHG, and JO.
Okay, can I, are there any, any questions? Not seeing any. Can I get a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion in a second for the passing of all of the policies with pulling out GCD. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Just checking to see if Darnell is back. Nope. Alright, next on the agenda is item 5.01, financial reports and budget amendments.
Good evening. Our operating revenues were $1,813,000 in April. Net consists of mainly current taxes, $374,000. Prop C revenues, $404,000. Earnings from investments, $265,000, and state revenue, $643,000. Our collection rate for current taxes through April was 88.34%, and that compares to 87.58% during, last year during the same timeframe. Operating expenditures were $5,449,000. They were, there was no larger unusual expenditures for the month, and most of the expenditures consist of salaries and benefits. We did not have any revenue amendments for April. We had several expenditure ones, but overall, they did not increase the budget. I'm recommending that the budget amendments for April be approved.
Get a motion?
So move for approval.
Second. And I do have a question.
Angie?
I just have a question for Mr. Rome. So this, this pandemic has affected our school finances for sure. Since our buildings are closed, our buses are not running, and many services are not required at this time. So I'm just wondering if you might share with us the approximate total cost savings this past month from not operating our buildings and the reduction in paying for the non-essential services? And also how this is affecting, as I always ask you, our operating fund balance?
Sure, I'm estimating that expenditure-wise, we'll save around 1.1 million and each, during the three months that we're closed. So each month, it's about one-third of that. We will also lose some revenue this year and more next year. But probably the biggest loss of revenue this year is what's included in our operation fund is, is our food service operation, so we're not operating our food service program. So those revenues that we would have collected from selling meals over the two, two and a half months is about $250,000. Consequently, we're saving that on the expenditure side, so so the net savings overall is what I'm projecting is around $850,000 this year during the closure. Next year, revenues will be impacted more than this year, mainly because of the state funding. And you know, it's, it's hard to determine the extent of those cuts, and a lot depends on how quickly things reopen and how quickly things recover. But we know that state funding will be cut next year, and probably the, the most significant cut that we expect is in our Prop C sales tax revenue. School districts receive a 1% sales tax revenue that's distributed equally to all school districts in Missouri. And since so many businesses were closed for, you know, a couple of months, and, and many will be slow to reopen, the sales taxes that the state's going to collect is going to suffer greatly. And so we do expect our revenue, that revenue to be cut 20, maybe even 25% next year, which will be probably about a million dollars. State funding cuts will also hurt us. Our biggest source of revenue is, is property taxes. Next year is a non-reassessment year, so we don't expect many changes next year. It'll be the following year when property is reassessed, where we may see the impact of the economy changes.
Thank you.
Here.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Rome? Seen none, and we have a motion in this. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of the financial report and budget amendments? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And Darnell, are you back on?
I am. I apologize. Technology is great when it works. Been working from home all day and didn't have any issues, and tonight, of course, right, at the most inappropriate time. Yes, I am back. So thank you guys very much, and thanks Jennifer for taking over for a little bit. Next up on our agenda, thanks Mike for, for the, the information. New business, 6.01, approval to award the contract for improvements to Westchester. Is this, is this Mike remain? Yes, Russ Larry, who is our Director of Buildings and Grounds, will present this agenda item.
Russ, hello, sir. Hello. Okay, the Buildings and Grounds Department solicited bids to renovate existing interior rooms at Westchester. We had seven bids that we opened. I'm recommending the Van Star Construction Company for the base bid and bid alternate two, the low bid. We had a, issues with the low bid not having a complete bid, so I'm going with Van Star Construction, recommending them for the project. The budget, this was, I'm sorry, this was budgeted in the 2021 Dedicated Maintenance Fund Plan for, we had $38,000 budgeted for the project.
Thank you, Russ. This is an action item.
Move approval.
Second. Any questions for Russ regarding this project?
I've got a couple of questions. I don't know if Russ is the person to answer them or someone else. My understanding of what we are approving here is a few fold. So currently, there's four kindergarten sections at Westchester for this year. Is that right?
I believe so. That's, I'm not 100% sure of that, Mark.
Okay. And so, and for next year, we are anticipating more. So my understanding is we're approving turning the principal's office into a fifth kindergarten classroom. That's part of this project, right?
It is, but that's not what I'm here for tonight, though. Those were, those were alternates in the bid process, but we're, we're not seeking to do those at this time because we're waiting later in the summer to see what class sizes may look like. Tonight, it is just for the renovation of a, of a storage area for a new teacher's, or teacher's bathroom and a water hydrant, roof-mounted water hydrant for the HVAC.
Okay. So then the other thing, so if the conversion of part of the gym, the conversion of the music room to be a classroom, that would be if a sixth section is necessary?
Correct. Any of that would come back probably midsummer, where we, when we see where things are and decide what we want to do, then we'll bring that back to the board.
Okay. And then do you know if there's a plan if a seventh section of kindergarten is necessary at Westchester?
I, I'm not aware of that. Mr. Rome, maybe. I'm not.
Yeah, Mark, we're still looking at the numbers, and what we wanted to do was get pricing for the restroom conversion and the hydrant that we wanted on the roof. We, we wanted to get pricing for any additional renovations should our enrollment at Westchester continue to grow, so that we would have the pricing in place. So if we decide to recommend the conversion of the office space or any work in the gym, then we would bring that to the board at a later date.
Okay.
June or July.
Any other questions for Russ? Seen none.
Is replacing on the AC?
I'm sorry. What'd you say?
What is this replacing on the AC?
On the roof, it's just a, a water hydrant to, to help our maintenance people work on the current HVAC we have up there on the roof.
This allows them to flush out the, the HVAC when they need to clean the coils.
Correct.
All right. Thank you, guys. We do have a motion in a second for approval toward the contract for improvements to Westchester. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Next up, Bernard's agenda, 6.02, approval toward the contract for E-Rate internet bandwidth. This is for Allison Toth.
Good evening. In February, we applied for E-Rate funding, which is a federal program that provides funding to schools and libraries across the country to upgrade internet bandwidth for all of the schools in the district. And we are currently finishing the third year of a five-year contract with Spectrum Enterprise and have a, have a one-gig circuit that comes into Kirkwood High School that serves, that services all of our schools. That particular contract is not eligible to have bandwidth capacity added to it and have it be E-Rate funded because of the way that the E-Rate was filed and because of the way that that contract was written. Four responses were received, and Spectrum Enterprises submitted the lowest response. They offered to eliminate the existing contract, and then we would replace it with a, a new three-year contract for a two-gig circuit that would double the capacity of the bandwidth servicing all of our schools. And we've had good experience and service from, from Spectrum for a number of years. They've been the internet service provider for Kirkwood School District. So the Director of Technology Services recommends awarding the contract to Spectrum Enterprise for a term of 36 months for $2,399 per month to be paid from the Dedicated Technology Fund.
Thank you. This is an action item.
Move approval.
Second.
The motion is second for approval of the war contract for E-Rate internet bandwidth increases. Any questions for Allison? Seen none. Get motion in a second for approval toward the contract for E-Rate internet bandwidth increase. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next up, 6.03, approval toward the contract for the purchase of wireless access points. Allison Toth.
Thank you. Through the same federal funding program called E-Rate, the district also applied for funding to purchase new wireless access points in the district. And the way that that was, application was filed with E-Rate, we were seeking HPE Aruba branded equipment or equivalent. That program does not allow you to only accept bids on a particular brand. We did pilot the HPE Aruba wireless access points at K-E-C-C as well as in the science area of Kirkwood High School during the 2019, 20 school year, and had really, really good results, noticeable results that a number of students and teachers commented on. So that was wonderful. We did only receive one bid response as part of E-Rate's required 28-day bid program. And we feel like the reason for that is that HPE assigns a preferred vendor status, which is something that's not only reserved for technology items. I, I've talked with our maintenance folks, and I understand that maintenance and other areas of business do something similar, where a vendor has a, a preferred status to a particular client, and other vendors may realize that their, their bids are not going to be as competitive. So we did post the bid on the district website as well as with E-Rate for the mandatory 28-day bid window and received one response, and that's from WJR Technologies. We did talk with HPE Aruba and get a letter stating from them that H, or I'm sorry, that WJR Technologies is in fact the preferred vendor, and stating that Kirkwood is receiving a better discount through that vendor than is provided to our highest level certified partners through Aruba HPE's E-Rate program, program. We also did some research online ourselves, just looking up the equipment and looking at the list prices and verifying that the price we were quoted was, in fact, much less than list prices that can be found online. This current year of funding is actually the sixth year of what was a five-year E-Rate window. The federal government decided to add that sixth year in January. So any of the funding that the district does not take advantage of now will go back into the program and be absorbed, and then next year starts year one of another five-year cycle. Based on the district's free and reduced lunch eligibility percentage, E-Rate will reimburse the district 40% of an eligible project, and the district is responsible to pay 60% of that, of a eligible project. The, the maximum funding that Kirkwood School District was eligible for in the sixth year of the five-year cycle was $276,000. And the district would not receive any reimbursement on, on project costs above that $276,000. So I am proposing that we award the bid to WJR Technologies in the amount of $357,164.45 with a 5% contingency of $17,858 to be paid from the Dedicated Technology Fund.
This is an action item. Move approval.
Second.
Any questions for Allison Toth? Seen none. We do have a motion and a second for approval toward the contract for purchase of wireless access points. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next up, 6.5, 6.05, lodging of MSBA policy revisions for FEF construction contracts bidding and awards. Dr. Condon?
I think we have 6.04 first.
You're right. I'm sorry. Release approval of facilities authority lease renewal. That's for Mr. Rome.
Yes, thank you. Each year, we must have the board approve our lease renewal with the Kirkwood School District Facilities Authority for the payment of principal and interest on our 2013 and 2014 leasehold revenue bonds. This payment will be included in our 2020, 21 fiscal year budget and paid from our Prop I fund. The total amount of principal and interest for 13, 2000, the 2013 and 14 bonds is $2,587,640, and I'm recommending that the board approve the resolution renewing this lease agreement.
This is an action item.
Move approval.
Second. Any questions for Mr. Rome? Hearing none. Again, we have a motion and a second for approval of the facilities authority lease renewal. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. 6.05, lodging of their MSBA policy revisions. Dr. Condon?
Thank you, Mr. Frost. So policy FEF was provided to the district with some revisions from, recommended from MSBA. The policies were lodged, this policy was lodged with the changes that MSBA provided, and additional conversation ensued about the changes. It has been recommended that if we take a look on the page that we are on at this point, that the district maintain the, the prevailing wage provision that had been included in policy FEF. So I would need to send this back to MSBA for approval, but wanted to relodge the change in the language or in that provision.
Thank you. This is an action item.
Do we have questions? Or first, you want to?
Move approval first?
Yes.
Second.
All right. So any, any questions for Dr. Condon?
I just have a question.
Sure.
The recommendation from MSBA and the delicate platform was to provide more flexibility in hiring workers and construction projects. So just so that I understand, this is different than what was recommended, and what it does is ensure that we pay prevailing wage. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. Mr. Rome, are there any other changes that I'm missing in describing the, the difference?
The, the main change was the, the state law requires paying prevailing wage for contracts, construction contracts that are $75,000 and higher. And the change to this policy was to reduce that to $10,000. So any construction project greater than $10,000 would, would now require us to pay prevailing wage.
Thank you.
Question from Chad, if you guys can hear me.
We can.
Okay. Is, how did we get to the $10,000 mark versus 15 or 20 or 50? Was there a reasoning behind that?
Sure. Well, before the, the old policy required us to bid contracts at $15,000 or higher, there was no, there's no limit on paying prevailing wage. And so, and I talked to our maintenance staff to kind of figure out exactly what our past practice was. And, and we, for the most part, anytime there was any construction, we were requiring prevailing wage. But oftentimes, there was real small projects such as, and the example that was given was if we have a carpenter come in and put up tack boards in a classroom, stuff like that, that might be low dollar. We were not requiring prevailing wage. And so, so, you know, the thought was to set it at $10,000. It's, it's, we would have been doing that in the past, with the exception of something that might have cost a few thousand dollars or, or even $5,000. So, so that's kind of really where that came from.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Can you guys tell me who seconded that motion?
It was Chad.
Angie? Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Condon? Seen none. We do have a motion and a second for lodging of MSBA policy revisions for FEF construction contracts bidding and awards. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Next up is our 7.01, it's an administrative and board report, 7.01, report on summer school. Is this for Dr. Painter?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you this evening about our summer school options for the coming months. In response to changing needs and concerns of our families, we've been able to expand our summer program to offer students, all students, actually, the option to engage in high-quality learning this fall. We're very excited about this. I mean, options will be available this summer. Each taken advantage of our district-issued technology, which you may have heard, we are not going to be collecting this summer, primarily due to safety concerns. And so we're making something good out of this as we go forward. Elementary programming will continue at, for Kirkwood in the left-hand column. Well, Kirkwood Elementary will continue tutoring for individuals or small groups of K-4 students who were previously identified as needing supports in reading and/or math. Middle school programming at both Nifre and North will include algebra jumpstart and transition supports for incoming sixth graders, and then Nifre will also be doing some leadership training for some of their seventh and eighth graders. And at the high school level, Kirkwood High School will continue offering credit recovery options online this year, this summer. Because of what's going on, we will be doing online only, and that will be through Odysseyware. Special School District, extended school year will be offered virtually to students who qualify through Special School District. This will be occurring in June at the elementary, middle, and high school level. And finally, on the right-hand column, we're excited to offer enrichment extension and/or credit enhancement courses to all of our students this summer. These will take place through our partner, through Springfield Public Schools, launch access provider, again, based in Springfield. K-8 students can take up to four enrichment or extension courses that are offered in June and July. Students can take credit enhancement courses that are typically health, personal finance, and lifetime fitness, but they will also be able to take other courses through launch this summer as well. We are pleased to offer these opportunities to all of our families, if they choose to do it, our families or to our district. Interested families will need to enroll directly through Springfield Public School District. I just want to give a shout out as well. We have teachers coordinating the efforts, the Kirkwood efforts at each of our schools. At the middle school level, Ellen Holly and Jen Hale are really doing a great job of coordinating, of course, working with their principals. And then, we have contact people at each of our elementary, elementary schools who are coordinating tutoring as well. I will say that it's probably, is worth mentioning that we're able to offer this free of charge to our families and at no cost to our district because we are, because students will be applying directly through. Technically, there will be students at Springfield Public Schools this summer, which means that Springfield will be able to collect the ADA funding for those students this summer. And their calculations for ADA, because there'll be enrolling students from the entire state, will be much higher than ours will be. And so, we are choosing to forego our normal summer ADA funding for that. And in the process, just as an example, last year, if we would have enrolled just in those three courses, this, the high school students who had signed up, which I believe is just under 100 students each for personal finance and health, and about 60, 65 students for lifetime fitness, that would have cost us roughly 42,000, or $52,272 if we were paying for those courses through launch. And last year, we collected roughly $7,800 from our ADA funding through the state. And so, just based on last year's alone, we would, it's basically a net gain of saving the district about $44,000 this summer by having students apply directly through Springfield. And in addition to the net savings, it also is opening it up so that anybody in the district, K-12, who wants to take some courses can do that.
Nice. Thank you very much. Any questions for Dr. Painter?
Darnell, I have one.
Yeah.
I have one too, Darnell.
Can I go first? Thanks. Okay, sorry. And Dr. Painter, thanks for this, and I think it's great with everything going on that more students have the opportunity for online learning this summer. How do, how is this word gonna get out to parents? How are we sharing this information for those who may not have known about it or been interested or just never thought of it before now?
Yeah, I appreciate you asking that. We did send it, we did included it in this last Saturday's spotlight. There was a lot of important information there, and so, we're going to need to double back with that. I believe our principals are sharing as well, but then I know we'll be needing to share on social media as well, certainly over the next couple of weeks. But I would imagine even into the summer, because there are courses that are offered at the, at the K-8 level that are offered in June and July. And so, those students can sign up, even if they, even if, you know, this is a great idea, but I need a break because I've been doing this online learning thing for two months and I want a break. Well, they can come back and do it later in the summer for enrichment or extension purposes. And so, that's the exciting thing. I also, another reason I'm happy you said that.
I also want to add that, pursuant to our communication plan, the principals will send it out. And I think with this one, it would probably be yet this week for teachers to send it out to parents as well.
Yes, absolutely. And then, I will, can you see? Nope, you can't see that. Hopefully, you can see our website now. Ginger, can they see the website?
Yes.
Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay. I will be honest with you, that the process for, and this is really for all of our families throughout, out there who may be interested, the process that's outlined on Springfield's website is a little, little complex. You go, wait a second, why do I need to apply, why do I need to submission records when we're just doing a summer online course? Well, again, technically, because you are registering with Springfield Public Schools for the summer, there, there are some different processes that you would, that you would do because it's only for summer courses and you don't live in Springfield. But many of those are the same. And so, I went through the process myself over the weekend and created. If you go to our COVID-19 website, which is off of the main district site. So, if you go to our main site and then click on school closures, and then go to KSD learns online and summer school. And we'll get a button on the main site as well for summer school. There's lots of information here about the options. But then, if you go to enroll and launch, this is basically a tutorial that walks you through everything you need to do. Did you have another question, Jennifer? I'm sorry.
No, I just really appreciate it because I think, and heard from some parents who haven't done some school before, who are interested in everything going on with COVID. So, I think it was good to just step through that and record it that we can point people back to. I appreciate it. Thank you.
There, because many camps, as well. Hopefully, that some of these enrichment and extension opportunities will provide that online camp experience. Not the same, but it's also pretty cool. And particularly the elementary ones, the June theme is around exploring the national parks. And, and I believe July is around the Olympics. So, they have a month of activities and learning around a common theme. Just done a great job with this. Dean Marie?
Hi, I'd just like to thank you fiscally responsible and to forego the funding to give kids the opportunity and also save our district.
I will admit that I, hands with my crew man, Matt Principal saying, are we actually this, this good of a deal? But yeah, I mean, it really is for all of our families.
Yeah. On, like, online resources such as iXL or Epic, are those types of things that are on our children's iPad, those resources still be available all summer for our students?
In many cases, they will. And actually, it's in a different part of our website under our student devices, but we have a list of different things that students may be able to continue doing with their devices and collecting those. For example, Dreambox gave us. During, it actually ends on June 30th, and the free one does. And so, so those, there are some of those. Epic is, several of our schools have a, well, of our schools have a school license. Since that would continue if you are not schools. Myon is another reader that is the same way. If you have, I'm blanking on the name right now. Over at OneDrive, Overdrive or something like that. If you have a library card at Kirkwood Public Library, or St. Louis County Library, or Lewis City Library, you can download books from the library onto your iPad or laptop.
And all those resources you said on the website, correct?
There is a spot, yes. We will, as we get through Thursday, I think we probably will need to shift gears towards summer a little bit and have you, have easy-to-find places on our website for parents who don't know where to go diving.
Yep. Thank you.
You. Anything else?
I have a question.
Ms. Bernard?
Oh, yes. I saw in your write-up that you mentioned the Horizon Sprog program. I didn't know.
Yes, sorry.
Can I, can I, can I talk about that just for a minute or thing?
Absolutely. That was, I think that was in my memo at the, at the bottom of my.
Okay. Well, I just want to thank you and Dr. Bailey, and especially Dr. Bailey. He's been attending the Horizon Sprog board meetings and coordinating with us because those students that are most in need, who are reading behind level and need some enrichment, will have another option. And we're working with the Kirkwood School District, and it's the Sprog Horizon Summer Program. It'll be online, and we're very fortunate and grateful that all those students have devices from Kirkwood and those learning platforms that you mentioned. And we also have two Kirkwood teachers who'll be guiding them. It'll be a little bit different than what the summer school program is. Be more of an incentive program, a one-on-one reading specialist will be with them, and they'll also work with parents and have esteemed projects and distribution of materials and incentives. So, that'll take place June 15th to July 10th. And the Horizon Sprog Board is very grateful to the district for working with them and trying to help close that opportunity gap and the achievement gap and the COVID gap. So, we're hopeful that some of this will be fun for the students as well, since we've heard everybody's a little bit tired of learning online. But at least we can also provide that, and thank you for all those, the entire district.
Yeah, I was just emailing with Vicki today, the chairperson. So, yeah, we're glad that we can do what we can. And it actually, I wanted to make sure that they knew. Do of all students, really, the great thing is all of the, all of the four different opportunities, none of them are, are mutual families could participate in the Kirkwood or the SSD and launch as well, and same thing with Sprog.
And it looks like Darnell is having some more technical difficulties. So, are there, are there any other questions for Dr. Painter? Hearing none, I'm going to move on to item 7.02, report on summer professional development.
Well, we are looking forward to working with our teachers this summer, continuing our learning and enhancing our future work with students. I'll be honest, that we've had to retool some things. We had to adjust and make some changes to our summer calendar, which actually ironically was ready for publication on March 15th. And so, that kind of changed a little bit. But our planned activities will now be almost exclusively online with a general focus on key topics that we know are going to be important to us as we look forward to whatever fall may look like for us. Those topics include educational equity with planned opportunities for students to learn with Sharaki Holly and the team from the Center for Cultural Response, Response to Teaching and Learning. This was scheduled to be his third and final opportunity for him to come meet with the rest of our staff who had not had an opportunity to learn with him thus far. And we, all of our staff will now have an opportunity to participate in what's called Bab Academy, which is an asynchronous course that, that our staff will be able to complete online over the summer. We will also have a focus on wellness and social emotional learning through a traumatic, excuse me, through a trauma-informed lens. All of the research that we're reading about welcoming our, our students back, our students that we miss so much, kind of points to the need that we are really going to be, need, will need to be prepared to address the, the trauma needs of our students, of our families, and quite frankly, many of our staff members. And so, we're trying to do a lot of professional development this summer, at least provide that professional development for our staff. We know we're going to be focusing on blended learning as well with numerous opportunities for us to look at technology and the lessons that we've learned this spring and plan intentionally around that so that we can be even better in the fall. It's, it's nice having three months to prepare as opposed to three days. And so, that, that's going to be a good thing for us. And then, we're also doing some targeted curriculum work with, with a specific focus on compacting our curriculum around essential skills because the fourth quarter of this last year has been, was so dramatically different than what we expected it to be. We know that we have to make some adjustments to our curriculum going forward so that we can be prepared to meet our kids where they're at and support them in their instruction next year. And then, finally, we'll continue our focus on literacy, K-12, that aligns with our district literacy plan with a specific focus on foundational literacy skills and supporting our students with dyslexia. We have already had some conversations with our private and parochial school colleagues in the area, and we'll continue to let them know of any opportunities that may be useful and applicable to them. And then, I just wanted to mention that it's important to note, we have intentionally put a pause on our professional learning at the beginning of the summer this year. Oftentimes, we will take advantage of teachers when they're still in that frame of thinking around school. But we've intentionally have paused until at least June 15th because we believe it's important for our teachers to take a break after this, after the spring. Give them a chance to breathe and reflect and frankly, recover a little bit physically, mentally, and emotionally following all that they've been doing, their, their heroic efforts. So, but we're certainly less than ideal circumstances.
Questions or comments for Dr. Painter? Angie?
Yeah, I just, I want to thank you again, Dr. Painter, for sharing these opportunities with the private and parochial schools in our community. Because if we share that professional development, it helps our entire community become more culturally responsive and trauma-informed. And especially during this pandemic, when, when resources. I'm a graduate of the Bab Academy there, of the culturally responsive training. And so, I speak to that, and also thank you for the trauma-informed training you, you helped run for. I do have a question though. This past Saturday, I attended a Zoom meeting about COVID response for St. Louis area board members. And it was, it was very interesting and informative. And I'm wondering if there's any PD specific to our teachers that might be off. Oh, you do some things with blended learning, but if something might, like that might be.
When you say specific to COVID, do you mean our response and being prepared for next year or about the actual illness?
Oh, well, either you want to answer, it's fine.
Yeah, um, well, I, I do think that we, we do get closer to the school year, or, like literally, our back-to-school, like the charts. What ever, from a health and safety standpoint, will absolutely be at the forefront of what, what we've just started, our reentry planning about this. But because things are changing so much, there, there still are some uncertainties about what it looks like. And we have several scenarios that we've been exploring. And Dr. Condon has been having regular meetings with superintendents, regular contact with Dr. Ulrich as well. But yeah, from, from, our, our team is preparing so that we can, when June 15th hits and we, we open things back up for our teachers, we want to have some great offerings for our teachers and frankly, for any teachers in our area, private and parochial as well, who want to figure out how they can best plan their instruction to, that, in a way that needs of our kids. One example, we're, we're looking at assessment opportunities and how if we need to do some or aren't able at some point to be able to have kids in our classrooms, what does that look like? So that we don't have to consider, you know, most, most districts looked at the spring as a whole harmless, for example, where work going forward can hurt your grade. We, we can't, we can't with school year thinking that that might ability. So, we need to really be thinking through, okay, well, if, if that's a challenge for us, if for some reason, we're unable to have kids in class with us all the time, then what does that look like? So, those are just some examples. Absolutely. Our focus really is, I mean, I think, I don't mean to speak for Dr. Condon on this, but we've really been focused on a couple of issues. Obvious, that we want to, so that we can meet the needs of our kids, think about their health and wellness. But I think they're safe on everything that we're doing, our students and our staff. And so, any response that we design over the next, that's going to be, is the thing that we do.
Ella, are you back?
Darnell texted me, and he said he, he's pretty much out, that he's not functioning. So, he asked if you rested the meeting.
Any other questions for Dr. Painter on professional development? Seeing none. Dr. Painter, I do have a question, and similar to Angie, I want to thank you for your work in this. And the, the focus on the social and emotional learning, I do have a question though. As we're looking towards the fall and what it could, what school could be and how we could improve it, is there any opportunity to ask parents for areas of growth for our students before just assuming what type of professional development might be best?
Ask, ask parents for feedback or ask parents for, like, kind of what, yeah, absolutely. We, one of the things that we're having conversations about is we anticipate sometime in early to mid-June, surveying our parents and frankly, our, our teachers and maybe our, our students as well. Just to get their input, get their feedback on how things have gone and kind of what they see potential needs being. We would be doing that honestly right now, but there are so many things that we're not sure about that, I mean, things could change. Two months ago, we would have never anticipated being in this situation. And so, it's almost as if every week, things change just a little. And so it's almost as if every week things change just a little extra. They do change just a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other questions? Hearing none. Item 7.03, report on building reentry planning process.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Pangborn. I appreciate it. So as everybody knows, our last day of school for our students is this Thursday, May 21st, hard to believe. And unfortunately, for health reasons, we have made the decision, as most of our St. Louis County school districts have, that school campuses will remain closed for student activities through June 30th of this year. But I do want to assure everyone that our planning has begun to ensure a safe opening of our campuses for our staff. And to do so, we're using a phased in approach. So based on CDC guidelines and the advice of our local health agencies, the district has developed safety procedures for all staff who enter buildings. These procedures include screening staff upon entry to the buildings and providing practices while in buildings and that including the use of protective gear. Ms. Casey, are you able to display the form that we developed?
Sure, let me grab it for you.
Thank you. So just so everyone knows, anyone who enters our buildings will be screened through this process. We have purchased touchless thermometers that will be utilized for anyone who enters the buildings. Anyone who is able to respond to these questions will be able to enter the building as long as they meet the criteria. So I was, I used this form this weekend when I went into the building, worked for a little bit. It's pretty easy to use. And then this form is kept confidential and will be provided to our human resources department and kept by our, our HIPAA officer in the district. And so our custodial maintenance and ground staff have returned to work full time for summer cleaning. Our copy center staff also returned to work today and they will be using alternating schedules to ensure social distancing while in the building. We also have our contractors that will be getting summer school, summer work in our buildings. And they will be utilizing the same safety procedures. We're also developing a plan right now for our support staff and our administrators to begin working in buildings that will ensure safe distancing and follow the same safety procedures. The schedule that we develop may include a staggered alternative schedules for our staff as they come into the buildings, probably starting in July. As you noticed, we've had to adjust our summer learning schedule for our students and for our staff. And so just so that you know, I know everyone is very anxious to, to know what school might look like as we begin back in, in August. But I just want to let everyone know that as we look forward to the next school year, we will continue to work with our leaders in public health and in the education field so that we can develop a plan that meets the social, emotional, academic and wellness needs of our students, staff and families. Everyone is different and everyone's circumstance is different. And so there are lots of variables for us to take, keep in mind. We will be using a variety of resources, including the guide that was provided for us from MSBA. And we have begun and have scheduled meetings to include Dr. Ulrich and Dr. Fields to join us in working on those options and a plan for instruction for August. We will definitely keep the board involved along the way through the process by providing information and seeking input as we progress. Are there any questions from our board members?
I have more of a comment, which is just, you know, obviously the state rules were relaxed and somewhat in terms of a start date and issues like that. Where I'm just going to comment that it's helpful that if that's something that we consider to be in play as a potential way that school might look in the fall, getting at least the, the fact that that's on our radar, out in front of our employees and also our parents and students early. Just so they can understand that while plans haven't been set, there's at least some uncertainty about things like that that they might want to plan around. That would be helpful.
Sure, absolutely. I know that the state changed that gave us some flexibility for this year. We're taking a look at that to see if that would benefit us in any way. I'm not sure that it, it will, but you know, we're keeping that, that option open and will for sure be able to provide people with enough time because even if the schedule looks different, even if the start date stays the same, the schedule looks different. I know that families will have to make accommodations based on their circumstances. I know our kids are missing each other and I know our teachers are missing our kids. And it's really hard to move forward with information that, you know, is possibly changing all the time. But we'll do the best that we can in the time that we have so that we can really provide a solid plan for our families.
Angie?
I just had, I just had a comment about the MSBA. I know it's been quite a good resource for training, especially during the pandemic. And I also want to mention that they're having some online professional development for board members that I'm sure we'll all benefit from. But thanks for mentioning that, Michelle. That's a, a good document, a good start, good reference point for us all.
Yeah, thank you. And maybe as you learn more about those opportunities, you could provide that for our board members. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Condon? Hearing, seen none. Thank you, Dr. Condon. Moving on to agenda item 7.04, class size update for the 2020-2021 school year. Cindy Nelson?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to share my screen here, hopefully. Just one second.
And while we're pausing, I'll just put out a reminder that we have about 13 minutes until we may need to extend the board meeting.
Sorry, a little technical difficulty.
You want me to pull it up, Cindy?
One more time. You know what, Ginger, if you have it available, that would be awesome because it's not letting me pull that up for some wonderful reason. Nope, just kidding. Here it is. All right, just kidding. Good evening. Thank you. We're going to do an update for our 2020-2021 class size report. The last time we did this report was the beginning of March, so a lot has changed in the last two months. Notably, we've actually had more students enrolled over the last two months. So our numbers are going to be a little bit higher than they were the last time we saw this. As a reminder, we're using our enrollment and class size guideline process. We're taking the students who are currently enrolled and promoting them to the next grade level. For kindergarten, this time we're actually going to use the actual kindergarten enrollment numbers when in March, we used the, we used the projections. The end of May is a pretty good time to start using the actual kindergarten enrollment numbers. We do get more students over the summer. But that's how we allocate staffing and determine the number of classrooms needed at this point. So we will be using all of those figures. Our class size guidelines, kindergarten, 20 students is the max that we like to see. First and second grade, 22, and then 25 students in grades three through 12. Our elementary staffing guidelines, it's a little bit clearer for elementary than it is for middle school and high school because the larger schools, it's easier to disperse students without having to add another section. But for the, for the guidelines for K through five, you can see the number of students. And then the corresponding guidelines and the number of sections for that grade level. For instance, we'll be talking about kindergarten quite a bit. So you can see if there are less than 63 students enrolled, we would have three sections between 64 and 83 students enrolled, we'd have four sections and so on. Our kindergarten enrollment, and this is hot off the press from today. So we'll go through each school and talk about how many packets are completed, how many they have enrolled. And then we'll compare that to the projection, which is the Dr. Cochran's mid-series projection. So Kaiser, they have 85 completed registrations, 87 total, two are awaiting approval. Their projection was 111, so they're 80, 78% to the projection as of today. North Glendale, they have 76 total, which makes them 87% towards the projection. Robinson has 54, meaning that they're 62% toward the projection. And that's not uncommon for Robinson. We typically see late summer enrollments, a little bit of a surge for Robinson, so that's not unusual. Tillman has 64 kindergartners registered and they have had a projection of 89. And then Westchester had, has 115 registered and they had a projection of 94. Typically, when we look at the past two summers, the average school gets about 13 additional kindergartners who enroll over the summer. And we'll take a look at those exact numbers here in just two slides. So if we go K through five and we look at our current class sizes with the enrollment numbers that we have and the open sections that we have, I know it's very tiny on your screen, so I apologize, but you'll get a copy of the presentation as soon as Ms. Kittles is able to upload it. But what we're really looking at here is color. So the color of yellow means that that classroom or that class level is at the guideline. So the second in the purple or lilac color in second grade at North Glendale, all of their sections of second grade are at the guideline. So as those start to creep up, if they get additional students, those colors will turn to red. So any grade level that has yellow or red, we consider that a hotspot. So that's a grade level that we're really going to keep our eye on because they are close to having another section needing to be opened. So when we did this in March, we actually had six hotspots on our radar and today we have eight. So we have more students coming in and then we've updated those kindergarten numbers. So we, we also have kindergarten on our radar here at Westchester. And I know, Mr. Boyko, you had some questions earlier on about Westchester specifically. The current school year, they do have four sections of kindergarten. We did have a projection of five, but they're actually at six. And if they continue to get more kindergartners over the summer, they would be eligible for a seventh section if they have enough students that come. And we'll look at that here in just a second. I hope that helps to clarify that answer of that question that you had earlier. Another hotspot, Tillman's second grade, they're one student away from opening another section of second grade. So really looking at these numbers, keeping an eye on them every week and really making those decisions once we hit the threshold of having to have another section is what we're looking at on a weekly basis. If we take a look at our past two summer enrollments for kindergarten specifically, and we look at kindergarten so much because that is the little bit of our wild card. Those are kids who are new to the system often and we don't necessarily have exact data on when they're going to come or if they're going to enroll and what time they're going to enroll. So it's important to look at years past to get an idea of what to expect for the future. So for the 2018-19 school year, I had pulled the closest Monday data that I had. So it was actually ironically, May 18th of 2018. And then compared it to the first day enrollment for the school year. So for Kaiser, they had eight, 82 kindergartners enrolled on May 18th. And then on the first day of school, they had 96. So they actually picked up 14 kindergartners over the summer. So that's the number that you're seeing. The number in yellow is total. So we picked up 57 additional kindergartners over the summer of 2018. Last year was a little bit higher. The numbers, we picked up 80 kindergartners over the summer last year. 80 kindergartners is four full sections. So that, that's a significant number. 57 is three full sections of kindergarten. So those are, that's why we really focus on kindergarten and keep an eye on those numbers every week. And we really try to get the word out to our parents who may have a kindergartner coming or who may have a neighbor who have a kindergartner coming to really encourage them to get that registration in so we can plan appropriately. Especially now when our space is at a premium and if we have to make arrangements to find another classroom in a school, it's really important. Not a lot of change for our middle schools and high school. Their numbers are pretty consistent. They went up slightly at, at two of the schools. And I believe Nifer maybe went down by two students. Our staffing C remains about the same. We have hold still for our kindergarten. We had projected five, five sections at three of our elementary schools and we're holding on to that fifth section until those students actually enroll. So we have the staffing allocated. We're just waiting to see where the kids come. And I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Thank you, Cindy. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Nelson?
I've, I've got one or two. Going back to the middle and high school, you, you said at the start of the presentation, this did not include transfers. So is this just adding up the current number of fifth graders and that becomes the sixth graders?
Correct.
And typically that we see transfer, a bump in transfers in at sixth and ninth grade, is that right?
That is correct. And actually, once the school year closes out this week, we'll start getting to see those numbers entered for next week, but they have to close the current school year out before they can really start officially adding the kids for next year. They're kind of sitting and waiting.
Okay. And I thought we'd been given something like two weeks ago showing some number of transfers in those grades. Maybe I was misinterpreting what I was given, but it looked like
They would kind of be in hold until we open up the 2020-21 school year. They're sort of in limbo. So we wait until the school year is closed out and then we can start adding those numbers in for next year.
Okay, because what, what I saw from May 4th had 98 people registered for ninth grade. So those are people who were not in the Kirkwood School District in eighth grade, I assume. And those would be in addition to the numbers that we see here for ninth grade enrollment.
If they are new enrollees.
Yeah, I think that that report came from Dr. Bailey. Dr. Bailey, are you on? Was that the enrollment report?
So, Mr. Boyko, what that report and that particular number is, is that we have two things going right now. We've got our brand new student enrollment that they've never been in the Kirkwood School District before. And so those are the numbers that Ms. Nelson was talking about earlier, especially for kindergarten. And I think what you're thinking about for transfers, the number you mentioned regarding freshmen, a 98, those are the the second thing we have going now is that families are updating all of their annual update information. So updating their contact information, their emergency contacts. And so those numbers are being reported on our same spreadsheet. So we're working on getting those two things separated out because it's making it look like one number is much higher than the other, when really those students are already in our system. They're just getting updated, like emergency contact information. So that's where that number is coming from. Ms. Nelson is correct. Once we close out this school year, we'll be able to do those kind of in limbo. So some of those reports you may have seen that say like on hold or not completed yet. Those are the, the kind of in limbo students that once we close out this school year and roll over to the next one, we can then count those as official enrollments, if that makes sense.
Okay, so specifically looking at what's on our screen right now, we, this does not include transfers in. And typically, we have a net number of transfers in in these grades. But it's not as easy as just adding the 98 from that prior sheet to get a sense of what that number would be.
Correct. And that 98 would not be the transfers in. What that would include would be students who are currently eighth graders, who are rising freshmen, who are just getting their information validated and updated within the system by their parents. So the parents are going in saying, yep, everything looks good. We're just, we're just submitting that information. What we typically will have once the school year starts is those transfers in that are coming from other districts or even private schools. Then we also have a few transfers out occasionally as well. And those do typically happen at the sixth grade level and at the ninth grade level for the most part.
And Dr. Bailey, that validation process just began, which is why the number is 98, right? That will grow too.
Yes. And so those numbers, I mean, obviously the hope for those is by the time the school year starts, they're at 100%. That's the information that we've been using a lot during this closure time to be in contact with our students, be in contact with our parents. And so that is the biggest reason why we have to have those things updated. Additionally, that's whenever parents get a chance to update immunization records. If their phone number changed, their email changed, so the if their phone number changed, their email changed. So the hope is that those would be exactly matching the number of students that are in those grade levels. But the report can be a little confusing because it's kind of taking everything and putting it on one sheet rather than kind of separating the current with the new students that have never been in Kirkwood before. So we're working on separating those two out um and getting a little bit, I won't say more accurate, but at least more clear numbers.
Okay, and then my other question does let's go back to that Westchester. Uh, it it sounded like converting the principal's office into a school was a plan uh for the fifth section of kindergarten and using the music room as a school as a classroom just for the sixth section. Is that right?
Yeah, we're we just recently met again with um Dr. Ricker to talk about what those plans look like um down the line. So we we put that on hold a little bit until we have a little bit more information about the numbers that we need, um because adding one classroom is probably not gonna be adequate at this point.
Right, as it sits today, we need two additional classrooms. Um, and if the kindergartner kindergarten numbers keep rising, we would actually need to bump that up to three.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. It's eight-thirty. Can can you guys um extend the time, please? Michelle, there, Dr. Condon, do we need to extend the time now or at nine o'clock?
Um, I think we extend it now and we then we can go until nine o'clock. So it's an hour and a half, and then we make a motion to extend the meeting and we can go until nine.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. You're you were right. It's nine. It's nine, Michelle.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so right right now, is there a thought, you know, it it looks likely that there will be a seventh section of kindergarten at Westchester? Is there a thought about uh or definitive plan about how that classroom would be created, or is that something that's still in the works?
That's that's still in the works at this point. You know, when it was just one or two, we thought we had a plan, but now we know we have to go back to the drawing board if we're adding more than that.
Um, I I have a question about that as well. If Cindy, if you could put the kindergarten numbers back up there for the the classes.
This one?
Yes, that that's great. So um the reason for my question is, um according to the totals, if you total up all the kindergartners registered, at this time, it's about three hundred and seventy-two, which is comparable to this time last year. Um, and then the total last year was four twenty-seven. The projection, though, is five hundred and four. So, for example, Westchester down there, those are the students there, and it looks like for right now, that number is is okay for Westchester. But based on the in the current enrollment numbers, we can accommodate all the students with nineteen kindergarten classes, let's say, for now. Now we have twenty-three kindergarten classes, but since kindergarten is not required in the state of Missouri, and we're on we're in this pandemic at this time, what's the process for reducing the number of classes if our enrollment projections are not reached? So, for example, we have less students at Tillman right there. Um, so I know that we can move teachers around, and is there any thought to the process of that? I know you have to wait. I know it's early. Um, but you can compare this time last year to August of last year and um which is something that, you know, you can do, but it's a different time. It's a different year. But um as far as moving students around, things look pretty good except for Westchester, as Mr. Boyko mentioned. So that's my question about the process for at the schools where there are less. Yeah.
The process to collapse a section would be if we remove one section that the remaining the remaining class sizes are at or below the class size guideline.
And then I guess as far as staff goes, staff is allocated to um the buildings where the sections are needed.
Correct. And I, you know what, Angie, I had actually tallied it up, and I wonder maybe if if I fat fingered a calculation, cuz I had three hundred and ninety-six kindergartners enrolled as of today, and that the projection was four sixty-eight. So I'm wondering if you might wanna, I'll collaborate with you and make sure I have the right number.
I think I think Angie was using the high projection from Cochrane, but yeah, the the midline projection is about.
No, I was using the mid-range that Cindy used, Mr. Boyko, not the high range. Um, she did it exactly right. I checked her numbers from last time, but in any case, we can review.
Thank you.
So I I just want to be clear. I don't think I've ever seen five oh six as the projection. I've seen in the four sixties and four seventies, and if we add eighty more kindergartners like we did last year from this point, we would exceed that. So I don't want to create a misperception.
We better wait a month, though. Let's just wait and see, I suppose.
I think five oh six was the live birth.
Yeah, five oh six is a live birth.
Yeah, well, Cindy's left. Well, we can, we can, we could talk about it later. We'll see who shows up.
Has the mid-series projection from Dr. Cochrane in the projection column. So it's we'll add it up later.
You did it right, Cindy, I think. Thank you.
Mark, do you have any other questions? It looks like you're still.
Uh, I was just looking at my numbers. I was surprised because Westchester had one oh four for live births. Uh, yet we have one hundred and fifteen uh already signed up for kindergarten. So um
Yeah.
I guess that must be transfers.
Could be families moving in.
Okay.
I I have a quick question.
Go ahead. Yeah.
Um, Cindy, do you feel like the pandemic has any impact on enrollment? And if so, what?
Uh, I will give you my own Cindy Nelson opinion. Um, I think it's interesting that we've seen plus twenty-one students just from March in late spring, which is an interesting enrollment number. That that is not something that would normally occur between the months of March and May, um as that's not when a ton of families move in or move out of the district. I did hear last week that one of our um parochial schools at really one forty-one in Manchester, they're being permanently closed, which know those probably not in our district, but it's close enough for it to maybe affect our private and parochial schools in the Kirkwood area. Um, and it just, it just raises an eyebrow and makes you wonder what kind of an effect it will have on our enrollment. Um, and as the unemployment rates are so high, we know that often that that can have a positive effect on our enrollment as well, um as there's uncertainty in the in the economy and uncertainty with um families choosing to send their children to private parochial schools. And we need our private and parochial schools more than ever. Um, we need them to have capacity and take as many students as they can take because should we have a large um transfer of students from those schools, we're we're really going to be hurting for space.
I think I just want to ask Mr. Romey. He was going to check with Dr. Cochrane on how he thought the pandemic would affect. Oh, sorry, Jean Marie, I didn't know you were still asking questions. So I didn't know if Dr. Cochrane had weighed in on that.
He, what he did was he asked um other school districts basically what they're what they uh saw back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. So it was really just anecdotal anecdotal um information. Uh, he didn't really have any um numbers and he didn't um revise his projections. Um, so, you know, he he asked our thoughts and and kind of to what Ms. Nelson said, you know, what we experienced back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, is we did see a larger increase during that timeframe. And and so we had those same concerns that it could impact us. Um, but no, he did not provide any additional um quantitative numbers.
Hey, let me let me jump in real quick. Jean Marie, I'll give you one sec. I just want to make sure we're very clear. Our staff always correct numbers when they make uh, you know, important decisions and all that. It's important that we as a board support them, and they know that we understand the work that they put into the detail when they're making decisions. So I want to make sure we make that very clear, that we are very supportive of what the staff Thank you, guys. Jean Marie, go ahead.
Um, just a little side note on, you know, if the enrollment has been impacted by the pandemic, you know, one of the things that children are not getting immunized immunized currently um as pediatricians, you know, I, for example, Jack hasn't gotten his shot. So for me to register Jack, uh, it won't work because I don't have his shots up to date because our pediatrician, you know, I'm not taking them in there to get shot. So I think that um, you know, there are different things that are affecting maybe the enrollment such as that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And Jean Marie, I'll add on to that as a parent with a preschooler who was going into kindergarten next year and talking to a lot of students on their Zoom calls. A lot of parents feel behind right now and enrolling just with everything going on. So um they've all asked, can we still, you know, enroll? Well, of course, yes. So I think um I think it is good to recognize how this time is impacting people, but.
And then the other thing that I just wanted to note is I did have a conversation with a parochial school, um someone involved with parochial schools, and they said that their enrollment is down fifty percent. And so I don't know if that is um something we need to be looking in, you know, partnering with them on looking at their enroll, you know, getting their enrollment and.
I can answer. Ms. Ms. Andrews, we do for um because title programs require us to report enrollments for the public or the public and the non-public schools that are within our school district boundaries. We have next year's projections for all of the private schools that have been registered with us for next year, and and all but one are down. Um, for and again, it's just like us, though, that it's it's just now May, and those numbers may change by the time school starts up as well, but um their their numbers are down a little bit and within our boundaries.
And just from a community communication standpoint, will we be pushing anything out to kind of remind parents to register their kindergartners or no?
That communication's been going out, and you should also be receiving it from your school. So we sent it out from the district several weeks ago, and according to our plan, then the schools also follow up, and that schools were actually even having our um teachers send it out. So I don't know if you've seen that or not, but we are working on that process. So you should be receiving it. Everybody should be receiving it, but we know you're getting a lot of information and there's a lot going on, so.
And Dr. Sam, Dr. Amber Phillips, she and the social workers help families um to navigate the registration process. So I know that they're reaching out for just like some one of your concerns, Jean Ruth, immunizations, um helping families get get in touch with those resources, understand the registration process, and help walk them through it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Nelson? Hearing none. Um, thank you. Thank you, Cindy. All right, that brings us to agenda item eight point zero eight, future events. I have a couple items listed here. The last day of school for our students is this Thursday, May twenty-first. Friday, May twenty-second is a teacher work day. Monday, the twenty-fifth, the district is closed for Memorial Day, and it brings us to June. June second is Election Day. Following week, June eighth is the board reorganization at uh meeting and work session, time to be determined. And Monday, June twenty-second is a regular board meeting.
Um, Ms. Pangborn, if I could share, the board reorganization meeting um will begin at six o'clock PM. So that that has just been determined, hot off the presses.
Thank you so much. All right, Dr. Condon, is there a need for a closed meeting?
I have a quick question. Don't we have a a work session on the um June second? I didn't see that on there.
June second is election day?
I mean, June first. Was that on there that we have a work session on that day?
I haven't received guidance yet on when that uh work session has been scheduled.
Okay.
Dr. Condon, is there a need for a closed session?
Yes, there is.
Can I get a roll call?
Hi.
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 And I. Okay, with that, um we are ready to adjourn. Get a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
And that is the closing of our meeting. Thank you so much.
If I could remind our board members to please find the invitation to close session that was provided by Cindy Nelson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.